But we do roll call. Uh, Jan Bunting.
Here.
Tim Gay.
Here.
Steve Sopsey.
Here.
Dave Owens.
Here.
George Bailey's absent. Also present, we have me, which is the Chief Clerk, Teresa Bushery, and then Ryan.
Wood.
Wood.
Thank you.
Um. It's typically approval of an agenda. I don't see that here. Hmm, I guess I want to do.
Because we got to amend it, right?
Well, I wanted to, yes.
Add some things to it.
We, uh, I had communication or conversation with the recruiter for the administrator position.
From MML.
From MML. He wanted to set a date to, um, meet with you again and go through the applications and determine who you actually want to interview. And then also I wanted to be able to discuss possible date for those interviews. So if we could do that somewhere on the agenda here.
Okay.
This special meeting date or something is probably what we end up having. Additional special meetings. I know you like that.
Is that legal to talk about it? This meeting I thought was just for the.
Yeah, that's what I was told too.
Well, this has popped up, but hey.
Okay.
Doesn't bother me. I haven't.
As well. So as we amend the.
I want to add something too.
This is, this came about in effect's actually our next meeting day, correct?
Yes.
So it's either now or have another one before the next meeting to have another meeting. So.
I don't need to do that, but.
I don't think we want to have two more special meetings to accomplish one when we're already in Traverse City.
Yeah, we will be here. None of us.
It's why it has to be what he wants to talk to us.
I would, I would suggest you just set your meeting time for the seventh. Earlier than they normally schedule time at four thirty to meet with him and kind of like you did when you, I, you know, I've talked about the position and all of those things and did the, or the advertisement review and all that. So.
What time are you looking at?
I would suggest, uh, three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
They give you an hour to meet with him, hour and fifteen, and then a little break before they bring their meeting on.
Four thirty?
Yeah.
And our next meeting is on the seventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
And secondly, there's other special meetings, like while we're on the topic.
And I also wanted to add something to it. Can I add?
Well, I'm just, we got to set a special date for the interviews.
Yeah, but I don't know if you did a set the date now, but I'd like to at least indicate to him what would you, would be an open availability. And I would, uh, so you meet on the seventh, you define, you know, finalize who you want to talk with. He suggested that we have a conversation about what might be a good time. We can set that meeting next regular meeting, but. So the following week, he said, if he has an idea when you're looking at, he can kind of let people know that maybe serious candidates.
Oh, this is about the administrator?
Yes. So I was gonna suggest the fifteenth or sixteenth. The fifteenth is the following Wednesday or the sixteenth, which is.
Following Thursday.
Following Thursday. So you'll have four or five candidates. To accommodate five, if you end up going with five to interview for the administrator position. You start it at ten in the morning, an hour for each interview, a short intermission between the two. So you go ten to eleven fifteen, interview one, eleven fifteen to twelve thirty, interview two. Have an hour lunch break. Commence at one thirty to two forty-five for three. Interview four would be two forty-five to four and four to five fifteen for interview five. So I mean, it's a full day that, uh, the sixteenth to the seventeenth. Fifteenth to the sixteenth.
Fifteenth through sixteen.
Do you think we need that much time? I know before when we interviewed, we had one person took an hour, but the next person took, I think it was fifteen minutes. They committed just.
Yeah, it varies. And I, I don't have to. I think an hour is standard for a professional interview, though.
Yeah.
An hour.
Well, I know what you mentioned.
Yeah, an hour is very standard for a professional interview.
Let's nail it down. Is it the fifteenth or sixteenth?
Well, I guess I'm asking you what your preference. If you have conflict.
It's really hard to do that without George being here too. But I think we will pick our preference and hopefully it'll work out for him and have the other day as a possibility.
You can set that at your next regular meeting officially, but I just would like to give him an indication what.
Set that a regular, next regular meeting, either the fifteenth.
Make either one of them work. I just. Maybe time.
No, I said it would be Sunday, but.
We set it at seventy while we're in here.
Kind of wondering who it works out best for you, which one of those days?
I.
No preference?
No preference.
Okay. So I'll just let him know the fifteenth or sixteenth.
Fifteenth and then.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Okay.
The fifteenth is, if it'll work for everybody Wednesday, and then if we have to bump it to Thursday due to George's schedule or something.
Okay, okay.
So you, uh, darn part timers want to skip the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Well. I started talking about it and I get a bunch of questions.
Are we going to approve the agenda?
I wanted to add on to the agenda. Can I do that or should I wait?
No, I guess we can do it. Come.
Um, I want to add on a letter. Um, I have to get three commissioners, at least three or more commissioners to okay that I can see the permits. And so I need to do, I, I had a thing typed up. I was actually going to just call you, have you sign something? But since we're all together and we can vote on it, um, I'd like to put it on the board that, um, the only thing is George is not here, but, um, I already have two yeses. I just, and actually I've got three with me, but I would like to see all of us. Um, it's so, we were the cost of fourteen hundred, I think it's fourteen hundred and some dollars for me to get the information. Actually, what I will do, I will go in and do it myself. You know, if it's going to take sixty-three hours, I can do it. I'll just go ahead. I got a thumb drive and I can just get everything on it.
All the information is not on the computer system. It's going to require a record hunt. I mean, I'm relying on what staff at the building office told me. That it's not as simple as putting a thumb drive in and running a bunch of data. If that was the case, we'd get it for you, but that it's going to be a pretty substantial effort for them to compile back to whenever the first windmill went in and the information and the permits and all that stuff.
I have, I actually have about two thousand twenty-one already, so.
Okay, anyway, I guess it's, it's an extensive effort. We're not trying to, but if the board directs us to do it, we'll get it.
Okay, this is a good example of like when we used to get this information every month. Every month we had different departments that gave us this information. And now that we want it, we can't get it because it's all over the place. But, um, I'm going to suggest that I will still come in and help to help get this through. I can go to, instead of having someone sit on a computer and looking for stuff, I can do it. Why don't I get what I can get and then.
If you, if you would sign the protocols that are required to utilize current equipment, that may be possible.
Okay, I would advise it.
I just.
I'll be glad to do that.
But, um.
And I'll do it here in your office that, you know, you have those three computers there. I'll just go in there. If I need any help, I could say, uh, you know, maybe interrupt somebody and see if they can help me.
I think we got off in the weeds. I think, are we adding it to the agenda or not?
And that's what we're trying to decide now.
Yeah, if we're going to put it on the agenda, I, I have no problem with that, but let's talk about what is on the agenda. Not, I mean, we still haven't done the pledge or the. So I'm, I'm okay with it being on the agenda. It's, but you're the board chair. I just, I think we're off in the weeds talking about something that we were trying to add to the agenda right now, so.
Okay, I would like to come in and talk to you, Ryan, on this.
The board has authorized, uh, us to spend that much time to look back to whenever you're talking. I'm not considering what the timeframe is. I think it goes back to twenty times a ten.
No, I don't, I don't need it to be that far.
Yeah, I guess we add it to the agenda. Okay.
We have to approve the business?
And let's do the invocation.
There you go.
Would you like me to do that?
Would everybody bow their heads, please? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for our health. Thank you for Gresham County's, uh, health. And please be with us as we make decisions for the county. May, may it be pleasing with you in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Now, the pledge.
Like the legal.
I mean, under the city of America and in two hundred and eighty-five, like, but just six for the ends. What do you use it? Under God, indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
All right. Uh, we need to approve the agenda.
Uh, I saw a move that we approved the amended agenda from the original, which now includes, um, item four, the recruiter for the, from Michigan Municipal League Administrator Review. A date for him to come in and review the candidates, uh, and discuss interview dates. And I think it'd be five then to discuss the, uh, request from Commissioner Bunting for, um, information on permits. Is that correct?
I, I.
The five things? Or did you have six?
True.
We got five.
Five? Good. I just want to be sure we account for all the amendments to it.
I, I support.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jim to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay, motion carried. Any public comment? No, okay. Okay, consideration of new business.
Well, uh, Sheila put together a brief, uh, memo here describing the situation, uh, there's a letter of understanding that, uh, we would, uh, recommend be approved. It calls for the payment of sixty-five hundred dollars to the Command Officers Association members. Um, amount of sixty-five hundred dollars and subsequently a budget amendment in the amount of fifty-two thousand to
cover the.
Over the expense.
I saw a move that we approved to ratify the letter of understanding with COAM to provide a one-time lump sum payment of the, in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars to the eight members of.
Does that include the budget amendment?
Well, two, don't you, two different motions?
I, either way.
I, I think they're both going to be roll calls, so I think we'll do them separate because of the amount.
It says budget adjustment.
Yeah, that's.
If you want to do them. What adjustment or?
One question.
Say this, we have to adjust our, amend our budget from last year to it. Otherwise, we're going to go over and that's.
Are we, are we going to take some money away from something else?
Fund balance, fund balance.
The fund balance, we'll take that away.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Then what is that? That's, um, not here. I want to look for this number. Is that for each one of the, uh, eight of the people? Six, sixty-five hundred dollars. That's for each one? Okay, and that total is up to be how much?
Fifty-two thousand dollars.
Well, that's right. You said that. Okay, yeah, I'm, uh, okay with that.
So you support then?
I support it. I will support it.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan to consider or go into a union negotiation letter in the amount of fifty-two thousand.
Well, I think you want to do them separate. Dave, just because of, uh, they're both financial and I think they're separate from each other. One is to approve it. Correct me if I'm right, Ryan, or since they are collated, connected, do we, can we do them both together?
Either way is fine. I.
Okay. How would you guys prefer we do it? Do you want me to add the other to it and we do one vote or do two? I think financial, so we have a substantial financial amount, so we have to do a vote on them. So.
I think we can do them together.
Okay, so I would like to amend my motion to also include that we create a budget adjustment for the public safety function in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five for the payment expressed in the letter of understanding.
I'll second it.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan to ratify the letter of understanding and create a budget amendment for public safety. Roll call.
Hey, Tim Gay.
Yes.
Steve Sopsey. Jan Bunting.
Yes.
Dave Owens.
Yes. Motion carried. And number three here. Financial Director Request for Outside Employment.
Yes, as, uh, we've noted in the past, uh, we've selected a candidate and come to my attention that he hit outside employment. County policy requires that that be disclosed. Most instances, the department has, the department has that authorization since.
Ryan, can his name be announced on this or is, I just don't want somebody to say it.
No, no, it's fine.
It's okay now? All right. Just didn't want somebody to say it and then it not be.
Elected treasurer and River Township, uh, Todd Morgenberg. Uh, and any of that. He's not willing to accept the position until this is pro-proprietary. Has, uh, but completed all the other steps.
So he, he's the elected, or currently the elected treasurer of Fine River Township, and he wants to remain there at least for the time being, correct? Any other employment that he does?
He indicates here that he does some individual tax preparation for.
I think most every other county.
For some folks, uh, on the side. Um, and I, I would further note that was some concern about, uh, potential conflict of interest. I do have a written opinion from legal counsel referenced that that's not an issue at this juncture. Um, but all the background and all the other work is complete, so.
Okay.
I expect he'll accept the position and provide notice to his current employer so he can set a start date here in the next, within the next month.
But you have any strong feelings one way or the other?
No. I think it's, it's just fine.
The only thing I, as long as the legal counsel said it's okay, I'm totally good with it myself.
I am too.
I mean, totally good. As long as the legal counsel says he's not violating anything, we're good. And if there is a conflict of interest ever at any time, he'll have to abstain from being a part of it.
Take some action, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Who wants to make a motion?
I saw a move that we approve the financial director candidate to request for outside employment.
Moved by Steve, supported by Tim to approve the request for the financial director to be to have outside employment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Osnay. Motion carried.
No.
Oh, Ryan, you had that other information you wanted to.
Yeah, it.
You're good.
So we'd like to, uh, since we're all, you're here to set a special meeting for the October seventh at, uh, three o'clock to meet with the recruiter to review the applications for the administrator position.
I move that we meet at three o'clock on October seventh to, uh, concerning the uh, county administrator position.
Second up.
Moved by Tim, supported by Jan to set, um, three o'clock as the next meeting date for our meeting to, uh, look for the candidates for the, uh, administrative position. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Osnay, motion carried. Okay, Jen?
Okay, I, um, well, what I had done is made up three sheets to have three different commissioners sign it as to okay that, um, waiver the fourteen hundred dollars that I would have to pay to have information. Uh, my, I have a whole new concern is that as a, as the longest running commissioner on this board, every year, we, every month, we used to get these, um, this information, not only from the permits office, but from all the different offices, how much money was coming in. And we, of course, we knew it went to the treasurer's office. And it's only been probably the last eight to nine years, probably eight years, that it's no longer there for us to see. And, uh, my biggest concern is that at any time, anybody should be able to go in any office and see exactly the money that's coming into their office. There should be a record with them and also with the treasurer's office. So, um, what you're saying with the permits is that if I wanted uh, a copy of the permits for the last couple of years, you don't really have them. Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying in the FOIA that you requested, it was reviewed and there was extensive amount of staff time involved in getting what you were asking for. As a result of that, taking an inordinate amount of staff time, that we denied that. And I expressed to you that and I express again that we cannot take direction from an individual commissioner for that amount of staff time without authorization from the full board. And waiting for your requi, uh, requirements.
Okay, one of the things I am going to now insist that every month we get these reports, not, not that somebody has to wait and ask for it and, and they can't get it. Actually, you can just give me everything from those years. You don't have to separate anything. I can do that if you want to put it. I can, I'd be glad to furnish the thumb drives. It's, it's only three years. So just take and copies.
So you've narrowed your search from your original request.
That's what I, I said. It was, um, two thousand. It would have been this year, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-two. I've got twenty-one. I already have twenty-one.
You're not worried anymore about all those years before?
Well, I already.
You had.
I have those.
Talked about.
I have those.
Like twenty-ten to, so all the original wind farm, you have all that stuff? Because that was your original request when you mentioned something to me is you already have all the wind.
I have anything that was.
Wheeler. Bethany, you already have all that.
I have all of that. The only thing that will show is if there's extra, we have found three extras that are going up right now, but that, that'll come in this next year.
Um, so.
Well, I do, I mean, I was sharing this report with everybody. Do you want to call them? I'd be glad to. I mean, I, I have.
I'm just confused as to what. Obviously, you've, you've talked to many of us about this issue, okay?
Yeah.
I support fully that commissioners should have access to this information. You've showed me your stuff from back twenty years ago that you guys used to get this stuff monthly.
Yep.
You, you keep records like no, you've ever met before. So you showed me that you used to get this stuff. You showed me your, your budgets from the past that showed all this stuff. So that's how I got, so I fully support.
Do you see?
Personally, I don't understand the whole FOIA request. I think that as a commissioner, just, and I don't know, it could be wrong, Ryan, and I haven't talked to legal counsel on this. It's like, if you request it as a commissioner, of all the things, you know, we're supposed to be responsible for major things within the county and the budget is one of them. You have expressed that you have a concern with this, uh, the number of permits and the amount of money that should have been generated from it, okay? And I understand that. What you've been able to explain to me, I understand and I support what you're looking for, okay? My understanding was you were looking from the day we first started building wind turbines till the last ones where these last solar things were done last year. So, well, actually, we got one going in right now. So there's through this year, I guess. So we have one going in right now. Now you only want twenty-one or twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five?
Twenty-one, I have that. Unless that twenty-one is not right. I'm assuming that's right. Um.
So you have twenty-one from the county or you got twenty-one from some other source? Because I would, if you're going to get it from the county, I think you have to have, if you're going to compare notes, it has to be county to county, not, you know, the Gresham County to Gresham County, not something that maybe you got from a different source or something. So that's my, my concern is when we, if you get this stuff, I want it to be done. You know what I mean? I, I want to hear about wind turbines. I want to hear about permits, none of this stuff any, anymore. It's like, if there's something there, I want it found and I want to move on with it because I'm, I'm a, I'm a look forward kind of guy. Yeah, there's rearview mirror when you need to look in the rearview mirror. But for our perspective is, I wasn't a commissioner then, so I have no idea what that happened. And the far back as you're talking about, I'll be the first one to tell you I was Gresham, I wasn't not paying any attention whatsoever to what was going on in Gresham County. I worked in another entity, paid my taxes here happily and was trying to raise four kids and, and be happily married. So I wasn't paying attention to those details at that point in time. Now I'm a county commissioner. Um, I understand the seriousness of these. Of what, you know, our dollars and cents, it's, uh, you know, I think we've had a clearer picture painted here just recently of declining balances and all that stuff. So it's, it's, uh, more important maybe now to me than ever that we really do get the true status of all this stuff. So that's why I support it. But I'm, I'm I just want, whatever you want to get, let's talk about it one time, one time only and move on. But I think everybody else at this board feels the same way because I, I have not talked to Tim a tremendous amount about this, but a little bit. If you want it, get it now. Ask for it. I support it, but then I don't want to talk about it anymore. But you get to the bottom. So reasonable.
Absolutely.
More than happy, let's go back to twenty-one and I'll, and compare that to what I've got.
Mm-hmm.
And the thing is, I'm concerned about the hours it would take when I could put a flash drive on there, print it all off, and I had to tell you, there's nothing in permits that's confidential, nothing. And permits is open to anybody.
It's never been an issue of confidentiality. Those are public.
Okay, so I can go in there and why don't I go in and sit down and pick out what I want? I'll sit right in your office over there, that little cubbyhole there. And I'm more than, and then when I get ready to leave, I will show you what I've got. You can whip through that real quick and see.
That, that's the point, Jen.
Yeah.
I don't want to be involved. If there's records here, someone will get them, they'll retrieve them, they'll be provided to you if this is approved. And that's the end of it. We spent thousands, tons of thousands of dollars on a forensic study. I don't want to engage in that. I don't have the time for that, this place for, I'm not living in the past. I mean, you spent forty thousand dollars for a neighborhood and a forensic study to find missing money and ill deeds and all that type of stuff. And I wasn't present during this timeframe we're discussing, but not fair to the staff or to anybody here, the public, to engage in another hunt through records on a timeless basis where I'm not sure where we're going. It sounds to me you've amended your original request here now. If the board directs us to go do a search, that's who we're working for. The county board will go do it. But we need clear direction and staff will do it. I don't think we need outside help from anybody that's not.
That's my point. I want to know exactly what years are you looking for? Because it's a one and done thing, in my opinion, unless you come up with some evidence that there is something that was wrong with these, and then that forces an investigation into other things, but I think it's going to be somebody investigating it other than you at that point in time.
This way, I've already given my information to Bethany Township because there was a question, several questions. I've not heard back from them. One of the questions was, is the taxes paid? It showed that, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I'll just give you an example. There was eighty thousand dollars they paid one year that went into the county. The next year it dropped down to forty thousand. I'm just giving you an example, uh, of what we're seeing. And the next year it went back up to sixty, then back up to eighty. And the, the, their question is, is what happened in that, that particular time? Where did that money go? Why did it drop half and then go back up again? And so I sent all of that to, um, uh, Bethany Township to look at it. And I, and he's having surgery on his knee, the guy that will look at it. So he is not going to be looking at it right away. Um, he had one knee done and then he went in for the other knee this last week or, I'm not, I don't know that, when he went, but just that he was going in. So this is some of the stuff that I'm looking at. And, you know, I feel the big issue on this board is that that your help, the help in the office does not have time to do it. That has been the big issue. They are busy with other stuff and so I, this is something that I can do. I know how to use a computer. I can go out there and sit and open up. I can go out there and sit and open up the year I want and hit a button and it'll download it for me and whatever. Put, put what I want on there. Maybe I just want four or five things on there.
Don't believe it's that simple though.
Absolutely.
I know it's not.
You're gonna be able to just find everything you're looking for.
No, I know.
Just from my experience with getting permits, there's paperwork involved that may or may not be scanned in. I have no idea. Cause once I fill it out, I get out of here and I don't care really what happens. I pay my money. They come inspect if I need inspections done and it's done. So I don't know how that's gonna look.
About two different things here. You're talking about a permit, that's a legal do that. And you're talking about taxes and that originates from the local assessment, whatever the assessment value is on this equipment. So again, we're.
I know, I know.
But I think you're. If I'm wrong, your concern is how many wind turbines were permitted, correct? And what's the tax revenue from those wind turbines, right? That's why you, from what you've explained to me, that, that, then I was like, okay, I understand what you're looking at was the permits should directly correlate with how many wind turbines there are, which would directly correlate with what Brian is asking about the tax revenue. Because if you built, let's just use thirty, if you built thirty wind turbines, you would be taxed on thirty wind turbines and that's where your discrepancy is coming in. That's giving you this questions of what is going on and why you want to get to the bottom, correct?
Right. And that's my job as a.
And I, I respect that, but like I said, I want you to ask right now, how much do you want? Do you wanna go all the way back? Cause like if you're talking about Bethany Township, Bethany Township, to my knowledge, didn't build any wind turbines, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-four.
I know exactly when they built them, cause I entered them all in.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
That was all long before twenty-one, when they built theirs.
Oh, definitely.
The, the ones you're talking about are gonna be all down in my jurisdiction of the county, which has also piqued my interest in knowing what the heck's going on with them. Because this is the six town, or part of the six townships I represent and I want to know if it's right, wrong, or indifferent. So that is, but you keep talking about Bethany and the townships that they were built in are on the opposite corner of.
No, I know. I just mentioned them for the first time. No, I just feel guilty of, of taking the employees from the county and having them do this work. I mean, that's been the big issue that they're too busy to do it. I mean, that's what we've heard for the last couple of months is that they're busy. They don't have time to do this. So I do, I'm not doing a darn thing all day long. I, I can come in there and sit and I'd be glad to do it. I mean, I will stay out of your way. In fact, if I have a question, I won't even ask you. I'll, I'll.
You get, you get your approval. We'll do our best to recover. If we need some assistance from you, we'll, we'll reach out.
Yeah, you can put everything on there if you want. Just go ahead and, and download everything. It's.
You know, I'm curious where this, we're talking about the variance. I know I don't have the history here, but the legal fights over depreciation schedules.
Long run of lawsuits and all that stuff.
Turning into who knows what, so.
So anyhow, I guess my perspective, Jan, is I don't think we need to sign anything if this board, if you get enough, if you get a, a group of us that say yes to what you're asking for. I just want, on the record, exactly what do you want so that this is kind of a one and done? Like I said, if you find something egregious, it's not gonna be Jan Bunting, the commissioner, who will be investigating. It will be somebody in an authoritative position will be looking into it. Whether that's the state police, the attorney general, yeah, whoever, I don't know who it will be. But if you find something that's that egregious, somebody else is gonna be looking at it other than you. So they'll be able to get those records with a search warrant. So what do you want today? What do you want? Cause let's get this done so we can vote on it.
Okay, I think my original thing that I asked for, actually, to tell you the truth, I can't remember. I think it was, let me think here for a minute. See, there's two years that they didn't do very much. And so I didn't want you to have to even fool with that. But I believe if it's twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, and twenty-five this year.
What is it you're looking?
I'm looking for a copy of each one of the permits of the wind turbines. You can give me all the permits if you want. If it's easier to just hit a thing and, I mean, how many permits does an office do over their year? It's not in the thousands. It's probably just a couple of hundred, I would think. I mean, I don't see a lot of new homes going.
Let's get it defined. It doesn't matter how many they do. You need to know what you want.
Okay, I want a copy of all the wind turbines.
What does that mean?
Any wind turbine that was put up that year.
The actual permit?
The permit, yes.
It has to do with taxes, the permit.
I can get the taxes off the internet.
And is there a specific permit you want? Cause there's a whole laundry list of them they get for those. There's soil, there's the, there's a whole list of them that they get, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
I'm not that too.
Well, I think it's a, I think it's like a block of permits. You come in to build a wind turbine, it's gonna cover A to Z of all the things that they, you know, cause when we started building them, they, they've, they've, just the other meet, the last meeting, they talked about how that had evolved and they have a block. You want all permits pertaining to.
The wind turbines, the wind turbines. It would be the solar panels.
So you want both wind turbines and solar.
Yeah, I assume like this, and then also from here on out, I just think we should get a list of the permits every month. And that would take care of this. And we used to, as I've showed you, I've got two books. I, I pulled one of the books. It's only probably ten pages on one side. And it has everything on there. It has the number of the permit, the permit who it went to and the address. And it, and I mean, it's thoroughly easy to read and I don't understand why we're not getting it anymore. We're not getting a lot of stuff. How can we do our job unless we have this information?
So are we clear on what you want? Are you clear?
Also, a substation has to have a permit. So it'd be the substation, the permits on the wind turbines, solar panels. I'm trying to think what else you have a permit for out there. I think that's it.
Okay, so, so this.
See, if they see something else, throw it down there. I don't care.
Okay, but if we're gonna vote on this, it needs to be clear what we're voting on. So from what I just heard you say, you're looking for the permits for anything to do with the wind turbines, the solar farms, the substations that correlate with these, correct? For the years twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and twenty-twenty-five?
Yes, and everything on there, the.
And that's.
Who owns it?
That'll all be in part of the permit. That's a part of the permit process, so.
Okay, that sounds great.
That's what you're looking for.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to be a thousand percent sure that's what you want. So that we're not back here two months from now talking about this again.
The only reason we'll be back here is if I find something that.
Like I told you, if you find something that is credible evidence, it's gonna be somebody other than you looking at it.
Yeah, I guess I'll tell you, it probably will be true. Yeah, okay.
All hypothetical, if it is.
If you.
Go down that road at that point in time. But right now, I, as a board, we need to be clear and concise of what you're asking for. I mean, Dave, Tim, do you agree? This is what she's asking for. This is what our staff will be providing. Correct?
That, will that work?
We'll get it.
And if you change your mind.
I wasn't here. I don't know those records. I'll ask them.
And we respect this.
To work on those, provide the information that's requested to the best of their ability.
And if you change your mind, you decide you want me to help, I'm available.
If we need to help, let you know.
Actually, we weren't here.
I'm the one that was here.
Well, just to say, none of us were here from back at the beginning of this, this last couple of years from yet. So I just want to be perfectly clear. This is what you're looking for.
And I will furnish some, some tax fully or.
No, we're not using any of the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that, I would advise against it because of the guy right there, Matt Hewitt, doesn't want anything being stuck in our computers that's not provided by the county. That's a no-no.
Okay.
Everywhere.
Yeah, so he's, I guarantee you gonna say, absolutely not. That has to be something that the county provides to you. And as a commissioner, I'm okay with them providing you with a thumb drive they buy in mass quantities. So okay with that. I just want it clear what we're doing here.
Okay.
Are we clear? Are you clear, Teresa?
Can you make a motion? Clarify the motion.
That's you should take a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Bunting has requested all of the permits pertaining to any and all wind turbines, any and all solar farms, and any and all substations that have been built in Gresham County, Michigan during the years of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, and twenty-twenty-five.
Yes, I just thought.
Moved by Tim, Steve, supported by Jan. So is this, we approve an FOIA request?
You're, you're giving staff direction of what the board wants us to produce. It's not a FOIA at this juncture, no.
Yeah, I don't think this is a FOIA at all. This is, they have a board member who's requested the board get this information and the FOIA is off the table. Because it's all public information anyhow. So it's not like we're, it's a freedom of information thing or nothing's gonna have to be redacted because it's all public information, correct? You're not talking about anything that somebody's gotta spend time going through and redacting. I looked into that part to be sure. Because that's where I felt like this really didn't fit FOIA in the beginning. Because FOIA is documents that have to be gone through either by an electronic process or a human to redact any information out of them. This has nothing to do with that. This is simply public information that she wants to investigate how many of these wind, solar, and substitution, so.
Yeah, I was not comfortable directing staff based on one person from the board.
And I respect that. I totally respect that. I think.
This is the proper way.
This is the proper way to do it. And like I said, I wanted, what do you want? One time. This is what we're gonna do, so.
Do you think there should be a reasonable time limit that the staff can spend on this?
I'd have to ask them again with this updated request. I can certainly let you know at the next board meeting, but.
It's a vast change. The, the original one was only back like twenty-ten or eleven or something, correct? So, I mean, you, you took what, ten, eleven years off of that. So it's gonna vastly change from what it originally was.
Yeah.
It was from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-five. Now we've got a narrowed down.
Right up and down of that.
So you're talking a vastly different length of time. It's way slower. It should be way less, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, you're right. No doubt. But again, vacation schedules, other demands and things that, but I'll see the day I get started and get after it, yes.
And like I said, I'm more than happy to help.
And without it being a FOIA, we also don't have to work under, it's gotta be done in ten days or whatever the, the FOIA law is. I mean, to me, if they get something available, provide it to her. You know what I mean? You know what I mean? If you work on it, you get twenty-one, twenty-two done and then something else happens, give her the data you got. Then you work on the, you know what I mean? It doesn't all have to be, I think, in one lump sum package. It's as you have time, get the job done and get her the information so that we're moving on.
Yeah.
So.
I would speculate that it's more recent, it's more apt to be electronically.
Absolutely. That's my hope is.
That familiar with their document imaging there, what.
My hope is the same thing, that we're, we're talking about modern times. So it should be, we're not talking about something that was done in twenty-eleven. You know, this is twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-five. I would hope that it is fairly automated in a, in a fairly simple situation that they can interject that stuff. Everybody knows, I mean, Keegan's done a great job of figuring out where these four hundred and seventeen windmills are. We know what year they were built. This should, you know what I mean? This should be fairly simple, I would think, to go, this is the dates, this is what we built, this is what you're getting, this is how it goes. So I don't foresee this being a huge drag, especially being it's just these years because it's, this is all modern stuff. I mean, I doubt that the computer system has been updated since twenty-twenty-one in there. Maybe, but I doubt. I mean, you're, that's a very short length of time. Twenty-twenty-eleven, totally different story. I'm sure they didn't have automation that was, everything was electronic. Now you can't do anything in the world outside of being electronic, really. Which is a good thing. It's twenty-twenty-five. We should be doing it. But I'm just saying it's changed vastly since then, so.
So I should get rid of my computer that's from nineteen fifty? No, I'm just kidding.
Nineteen fifty, it'd be as big as this, well, bigger than this room, maybe this building.
My computers are old.
Okay, we got a motion on the, at the table. Moved by Steve, supported by Jan to the county employees to help Jan out on her FOIA, or not FOIA request for information. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Was that motion's?
Thank you. Shilla, when you guys are done, I'll first shot pizza.
Mr. Sopsey.
It won't be me doing it.
The incorporated.
It, it doesn't come to my.
Years.
Exactly.
I have it, yes.
Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yes.
If that's what you're asking, yes, I just had that.
That's why I spoke out. I wanted it to be exactly what she just asked for. That's what I want. That's it. You know what I mean? To me, that's.
We'll give it the A team, yes.
Any additional public comment? Oh, you're a jerk. Moved by Tim, supported by Steve. Jerk.
Jerk.
Jerks.